Councilman Jenkins, here. Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And before we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I would just like to say a couple of words. On Friday, November 4th, our community was shattered upon receiving the news that four innocent residents lost their lives at the hands of another. I'd like to publicly thank our chief, the command staff, and all of the officers who responded to this innocent incident for their professionalism, critical thinking, and handling of an unimaginable crime. Job well done. If you all would please rise and join us in a moment of silence in honor of Sonny Man, Sarah Man, Kai Man, and Javon Watson, who tragically lost their lives on Friday, and for the victims' families, neighbors, friends, and community who grieve their loss. Please remain standing and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And the first item on our agenda is the approval of the September 20th minutes. I hope that you all had the opportunity to review those, and if so, I would entertain a moment, a motion to accept them.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to accept the minutes of September 20th, 2022.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the professional services from, it would be Mr. Manuel and Mr. Kendrick. Is Jamie online? Do you want to skip to the next one to give him a couple of minutes? If he pops in, we'll come back to that. Chief, I think you're up next then. We've got 3.2, which is the purchase of mobile video trailers. Come on down here. Yeah, you know what? All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I want to thank everybody who was able to attend the vigil last night. Hopefully, it has helped start a healing process that needs to take place for our During the town's discussion of proposed purchases for the American Rescue Plan Act funds, the agency requested $150,000 be set aside to purchase two mobile video trailers. It was the agency's desire to purchase two units that are similar to those of Charles County as the agency worked together, as our agencies worked together and have deployed mobile video cameras, the one that we possess now and theirs, for crime suppression details, public safety events, and other utilizations. We worked with Mr. Hamler, the town's ARPA consultant. The agency located a procurement tool that honored both the town's purchasing guidelines and those of the federal government's ARPA spending. The procurement method is SafeWare Public Safety Contract Solutions, and it would be through a Fairfax County government contract. Originally, the agency had requested to purchase one unit this fiscal year and one next year. However, at the recommendation of Mr. Hamler, we are requesting to purchase both units this year. Utilizing the SafeWare solution, the cost of the two trailers will be $143,889.78. All of the funds we're requesting should be coming through the ARPA spending plan. The purchase of these units will improve LPPD's technology capabilities. It will improve the safety and security of our residents and their personal property. It is our goal to have these units deployed on a near-constant basis. Uses include but are not limited to: security at shopping centers, park and rides, sensitive infrastructure, and government buildings; security at parades, large public gatherings, protests, and other large events where people gather; surveillance to address fluid crime issues, from overnight theft from autos to burglaries; and from construction materials and equipment to an extra set of eyes for our officers during sobriety checkpoints. Both of these units will have fixed license plate readers. If purchased, if this purchase is approved, I'll be contacting Superintendent Jones at the Maryland State Police and request that the Polite Police Department join the Maryland State Police License Plate Reader Data Collection and Storage MOU. This MOU was vetted many years ago, and it stood the test of time. We are quite sensitive to the fact that we need to ensure that as we deploy these units, that they are deployed in a manner that is consistent with the four corners of the United States Constitution. Any questions?
You said this is covered through ARPA money that was previously approved. So this would have been on a consent agenda had you not been the only, I think, item. Is that correct?
Yeah, it is. But it is also unique because we're moving the second purchase forward into this fiscal year, one being that why would we want to procure it twice? The ARPA money is in our, under our control, so we can just streamline the process and not have chief have to go through a whole nother process to do the purchases. And also, we can utilize both units as soon as we can get them. So we didn't see a need to wait.
When we were talking about this and we were thinking about how many we should request, we started at six, but we knew that they were expensive. We have especially some of our underprivileged neighborhoods that request the one unit that we have on a regular basis for crime suppression. So to us, this, this unit is just going to pay dividend after dividend. And just to give you an example, one of the last handguns that we seized, the, the mobile video unit was being watched live and fed the information to the responding patrol officers. So we took a handgun, an illegal handgun, off the street because of the unit. So, and the other thing is, I get 24-hour surveillance out of this. They don't have to take vacation. They don't need a lunch break, all those sorts of things. And it's just a technology that's going to help us police, police smarter.
Fantastic. Any questions from council?
Yes, I have a couple. Matthew Chaloner Ward, too. Thank you, Chief, for your presentation and for being mindful of the additional requests. So is there any additional training that officers need when they use this device or information that they get from this, this unit?
Yes, no certifications. The IT vendor that we have, that we contract with, who does just specific police matters, he is extremely familiar with this unit, as the sheriff's department has it, and he monitors theirs. He will provide any and all training, and it's going to come with our normal IT vendor. This money we've already going to be spending, so no, no specific training.
They're not very subtle-looking, so I'm just curious, as far as a deterrent, I know you have a chicken-and-egg situation, right? So they're very, to all, they're obvious.
Very overt.
Right, right. You're not going to camouflage this thing. So how effective are they in light of their apparent, open, and obvious nature?
I, I think that's a really good question, and one of the things that I'll never know is what crime they prevented. So the requests that we get from our underserved neighborhoods and the shopping centers and other places that want these, sometimes overt is better. When we get into the closed session tonight, I'll talk a little bit about what we're doing covertly, but these are popping up everywhere. And to me, if I can put that in a shopping center and not have to run 20 calls at Walmart during the holiday seasons per day, then it's, it's money well spent, and I can plug those resources other places.
And then lastly, and thank you for that explanation, I think that's a really good point. I, in discussing within the four corners of the Constitution, these are obviously going to be in public areas, public spaces, so to allay any concerns of residents of, you know, keeping Tom issues, we're, we're only able to put these in areas that are open to the public, just.
That's correct. And that's the only place we've ever deployed them is open to the public. One of the, when we were meeting with the, the residents of Patuxent Court, we talked about the video trailer that we have, and I am extremely sensitive of not putting that at the top of the hill, because no matter where I aim it, the, the cameras, wherever they aim, they will be looking at somebody's, potentially in somebody's room. And to me, that's, we'll find other ways to deal with that problem than violate somebody's privacy and constitutional rights.
Okay. Last question. You said we have one that's already in use.
We do.
What's the typical lifespan of these units, given their price?
What we purchase, that's a good question, too. What we purchase, Bobby, what do you think? It was pre-COVID, and we were having all the issues at the park and ride. And we actually went and rented one that, for three months' worth of rent, I could have paid one-quarter of the price of a brand-new unit. So that's why we, we bought a model that, we bought the Yugo model, and it's, it's been okay. We want to move to a Chevrolet or Buick model, that's what we're looking at now. It has lasted. We've had to replace a camera or two, but most of it's plug-and-play, and it is with this unit, too. So as long as they keep manufacturing cameras that can go plug-and-play, I don't see a reason where we would have to replace the entire unit. It would be pieces of the unit as we have issues with them. One of the things in, in, that you may find is of interest, when we had an issue with the camera the last time, with the camera trailer that we have that has a much shorter boom, we thought that maybe it had been struck by lightning, and that's what had caused the, the damage to the cameras. We can never confirm it, but it was an electrical issue that had kind of a burning effect that kind of led our IT people in that direction.
So are these insured, or?
Yeah, they're insured through legit.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from council? All right. So I'm looking for a consensus to move this forward to legislation this evening.
Yes, I agree to that.
Yes.
All right. We will move it forward to legislation later on in this agenda. I believe Jamie is online now. Thank you, Chief. So, Mr. Manuel and Jamie, if you could lead the discussion on the professional services and the traffic engineering.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Town Council, yeah, Jamie was, of course, before us a little over a month ago on a joint meeting on transportation items with the town council and the planning commission. And Jamie brought up a lot of, there was a presentation that Jamie had provided and was able to go through a lot of the details. What we have before us tonight is more of a specific professional services agreement that points out individual tasks, many I'm sure that Jamie brought up during our discussion. But I will yield the floor to Mr. Jamie Kendrick with Meeden Hunt to see if he has anything else he would like to provide or give us an elevator pitch on each individual task.
Good evening. My deputy planner, Lacey, joins me this evening. Pardon me if she speaks a little bit loudly here. So there are four things that we are following up on from our last meeting. Task five, these are obviously in order of the work that we've done for you over the last couple of years, is an extra work order, if you will. So when we took everything to State Highway for the flashing beacons, they came back and actually, to our benefit, reduced the amount of right-of-way that we needed, but in doing so, changed one of the locations, two locations, that we had to make some adjustments to the conduit and the whole locations, and then we needed to then adjust the right-of-way boundaries. So that is a request. I should point out that for all the right-of-way work that we have done, we've used a local firm, DH Stefan, which is on the Town Hall, straight down the end of the street there. So we've been happy to use a little lighter base firm for that work. Do you want me to take these one by one, or just keep going?
Take them one by one, if you wouldn't mind.
I'm sorry, do you want me to keep going?
Yeah, Jamie, go continue on through the task list, if you would.
Task, task six is the Southwest Quadrant Access Management Plan. This is the, from Old Stagecoach up to Port Tobacco Road. We talked about last time, we talked about last time needing to find a consolidated way, a strategic way to resolve the interlocking development projects occurring in that quadrant of town. There are, there were certain ideas in the comp plan that needed some more layout and thinking. There's certainly been traffic studies from each of the 1, 2, 3, 4 developments in the Southwest quadrant that have come through, and none have really ended up in a unified place on how to manage the traffic. So what we are proposing is to do a little bit of the civil design work to lay out some alternatives. I know that Mr. Stahl and Ms. Harrington have been doing a little work thinking about the public work yard. That's one kind of option for a locked gate. There's, in the comp plan, there's a, a, a full road that runs from Port Tobacco down to Old Stagecoach Road. I'm sorry about that. Full, runs all the way from Old Stagecoach down, hasn't really been incorporated into any of the development plans, probably need to think it through a little bit. You know, there's, if we're going to allow traffic to come on to 301, if we're going to allow traffic to come on to 301, then we need to do some work on the medians, because right now you have a, a bunch of entrances that would not come out to signalize location and need, we would need to realign some of the medians. And then lastly, you know, if, we, we think the best way to approach this, you know, coming out of the planning commission meeting and conversation with developers and, and community residents, is to put everybody in the same room at the same time and have this conversation. There's a whole bunch of side conversations going on, and I think it's not to the town's benefit to keep all those happening one by one by one. Everybody get in the room, figure out the best approach from a community and a development standpoint forward. And then if we end up with something that is a more, well, no matter what we end up with, coming up with what the implementation strategy is, who's paying for what, how do we advance the design and the construction in a manner that's equitable? I think it's fair to say that, you know, there, there is development already, there's already traffic in that Southwest quadrant, and we need to respond to that which has already occurred, as well as plan for some of the new stuff. The, the third thing is just kind of a, an authorization. Janine will bring us from time to time several traffic impact studies to take a look at, and, you know, pretty small, and I think Mr. Greenville has a fee schedule that the developer is charged, and then we charge you. We just needed some kind of a task to be able to charge to that we can, that we can reimbursement. And then task eight is to work with Ms. Harrington and others on the adequate public facilities ordinance. And again, we, we suggest that there needs to be, as we bring this forward to council at some point, some type of a, some prep work and a work group to talk through a number of issues. You know, we're doing this right now in Anaronda County, where, you know, staff and agency heads have done a lot of work to bring together a very technical answer, and then Planning Commission and Council weren't able to kind of get their minds around it. So we needed to go a little slower, but, but bring something more thorough. And so we are proposing to do that. And the last thing, and this is a, I put it in there, if you, you feel like you want or need assistance, is to kind of help keep tabs on this Maryland 6 project from State Highway that we don't really know what it is, and it's not been terribly transparent. We would help to kind of work that for you all. And as I said at the meeting before, to really articulate your goals to SHA before they articulate theirs to you, because once they do that, the project is moved on, and you'll end up with what you end up with. Thank you for allowing me to present. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Jamie. I do have a couple of questions before I open it up for the floor. Some of the things that you mentioned seem to, we've already have it well in place. For example, the traffic impact study, why would you be tasked with that when that should be the job of the developers to make sure that whatever project that they're putting in? Why aren't they eating the cost of that? And how would you, what are you doing to support that? Go ahead.
So, in that, in this case, we're doing exactly that. So today, a developer submits a traffic impact study to Ms. Harrington and reviews it, but given limited capacity, Ms. Harrington passes it off to us. But there is a, the developer is charged for that review, and in your fee schedule, depending on the size of the development, we, excuse me, we tell you how much it's going to be, and then you charge the developer for it.
Okay. So that cost of you assisting Director Harrington with the traffic impact studies is passed on to the developer?
Correct.
Okay. And then also with the Southwest Quadrant Access Management Plan, I know that was a big deal for, it's a big point of contention for the Steeplechase residents, that they want obviously another entrance into their subdivision or exit, whatever you should call it. And I see that that's a $23,000 price tag. What is, are you passing that on to the developer, or is that a cost that the town will be absorbing?
I would defer to Ms. Harrington and, and Mr. Manuel. I think, I think the way we envisioned it was, from my view, was that something needs to be done to get all of them to the table at one time, having the same conversation. And if that took town, you know, pushing everybody to the table with its own study, then, then that was the direction to go. Whether or not that's being passed on, you know, I would defer to others. I do think there's some, I do think there's some value in the town taking the leadership in getting this done and raise forth really a better for the others.
Yeah, I would concur with Mr. Kendrick's view that the town would absorb those costs in the, you know, with the desired result being a highly functional transportation system for the Southwest quadrant, if that costs us $23,000, I think that'd be money well spent.
Okay. And then that APFO, again, I know that Director Harrington has been working diligently on that. There's not enough hours in the day for her to work on all the projects that she has going on today. But are you taking the lead on that and relieving Director Harrington of this responsibility? Or are you working together on that? What are you, what is the vision on that?
I think Jamie is providing the expertise as it associates or is relevant to transportation element of the adequate public facility. So I think that's where those costs are associated with. Director Stahl has had a lot of input on the water and sewer side, and I'm drawing a blank, Ms. Harrington, who else has been involved in that part of the process? But as far as transportation goes, we do not have a sort of a qualified transportation planner that can specifically speak to maybe the elements that we would like to see included within the adequate public facilities ordinance. And we feel Meeden Hunt and Mr. Kendrick has the expertise and knowledge that we need to ensure we end up with a good work product.
Thank you. And the last one is on Charles Street. Will you be working with CGA on the Charles Street project support, since I know that they have been working, trying to get, well, they have secured funding on that, but they are working with the state to get that moving forward?
I'm sorry, with, I didn't hear with who?
The Charles Street project support?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, working with whom?
Cornerstone.
Oh, with. Yeah, I think ours is, you know, a more technical role here to make sure that, that the town is able to articulate in a way that translates to SHA what the town's goals are, and, and to then kind of keep an eye on it. You know, I would say with all of these, we certainly appreciate the amount of work that we're doing with you all. These are all upset limits. So, you know, if I don't spend an hour on Charles Street for the next year, then this doesn't get billed. But yes, we would be working with Cornerstone, you know, they'll obviously handle the bulk of the, you know, getting the, the money through the process, and we would be their technical, technical support. Again, you know, we speak SHA's language and, and help to translate what the town's goals are based on the comp plan, based on the other discussions that have gone on. You might recall, what, maybe 18 months or so ago, when they were about to start the resurfacing project, and nobody happened to tell the town about this, and the town had a different idea about the way it should be restripped to get, you know, some bike facilities in there.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions? Go ahead. Councilman Jenkins?
Councilman Jenkins, Ford, four. I would fully concur with Mr. Kendrick's and Mr. Manuel's comments. I, I think this is, I'm very pleased that, that we're going to leverage the use of this consultant for our use. I mean, this is, again, not to diminish anybody or the staff, but if we have a contract and we have a professional to assist us, I think this is, for me at least, money well spent. And, and I would also underscore what, what Mr. Kendrick said earlier about, again, not to diminish SHA, but from my estimation, we need to be in the forefront to, to be head of the curve, because he's right. If, particularly Charles Street, there, and that's a few years off, I suspect, in the, in the, in the state's draft transportation consolidated plan, but we just need to get them to talk to us at a minimum, to tell us, because if, they're going to probably shove it down their throats if we don't necessarily tell them what kind of things we would like to see for Charles Street. So in a nutshell, I would fully concur with moving forward with this, and I think this is money well spent. And so I applaud the staff and the town manager for moving forward to really maximize the use of Meeden Hunt. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Chaloner?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Matt Chaloner Ward, two. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick, for your presentation. I had a question about task seven as it relates to traffic impact studies. I think this is kind of quietly one of our biggest needs right now as a town with so much planned development moving forward. When we receive from the developers their traffic to impact study, what, what I've seen at least so far as being part of this council is a, an isolated silo-type of report and project, right? It is for that particular development, not necessarily in light of any other planned developments down the road. So my question to you is, given that it looks like the way this task is outlined is that you're, you're simply reviewing with Director Harrington what's coming in, what efforts can be done to kind of keep it a comprehensive overall plan for us moving forward? Because of course, you know, something that is in the Southwest quadrant affects everybody else, right? So it's not, it's not in a silo effect. So what, what will be done to make sure that it's all unified?
Thank you, Councilman. So I think what you're seeing in the Southwest quadrant is a reaction to exactly the problem you, as a response, I should say, to exactly the problem you described. I think I used this analogy before, Garrison Keeler, what was it? All, all the women are strong, all the children are beautiful, and all the intersections perform at level of Service A. That is, that is what your traffic impact studies tell you uniformly. at level of Service A. That is, that is what your traffic impact studies tell you uniformly. And I think moving to a unified plan in a given quadrant is a good step in that direction. Getting an A P F done sooner rather than later so that there are firmer standards. Right now, the developer's traffic engineer has a tendency to triangulate. They'll go to the town, they'll go to the state, they'll go to the county, and play one off of the other. Excuse me. And it puts Director Harrington in a really bad position and planning commission in yourselves, because you don't have a whole lot legally to rely upon. So getting that A P F in place ASAP will give you the leverage to have some more substantive conversations on, on a coordinated approach to things.
A follow-up question, and I definitely want to use this as an opportunity, is I think everybody on the council is more than grateful for all the hard work that Director Harrington is putting in to streamline everything. But given, you know, that basically, I hate to say it, you can pay an expert to say anything you want them to say. That's just my, that's my background in the litigation field and what I do. Is there any concern that the town should be doing their own independent traffic impact studies as it relates to particular developments and looking at them side by side?
So there are jurisdictions, and this is part of the A P F conversation that we want to have, rather than drafting ordinance off on our own. Excuse me, this is the kind of conversation we want to have. So some jurisdictions have said to developers, thank you so much for your interest in our town. Tell us what your scope of work is, how many units, you know, what you think, and we will do the study for you. And we will let you know kind of what comes out on the back end. Some communities have gone to a pay a fee and move along approach, right? So it would be, you know, you have 107 units, we've determined that the, the impact fee, if you will, is 4,000 per unit. They pay at the time of permit or over some number of years thereafter. And so there need not be any debate with, with the developer about what the specifics are. And some jurisdictions have, you know, left it in place where the developer performs the study with standards identified by the jurisdiction. I can make a, I can make a case for any of those. But I think I want to have a conversation about how much capacity do you have? What are your policy goals with these traffic impact studies? Now, look, if, if, if in the end, the local government is not going to push hard on a developer, and this is anywhere, this is not in La Plata, push hard on the developer to make certain improvements, then I think you've got to think twice about how hard and how much you ask them to put into doing a study in the first instance. The other problem we're having, we have right now, and this is, you know, this is a byproduct of smart growth 25 years later, is that developments are getting smaller and smaller and smaller. Now, this is not completely the case in La Plata where you're seeing, you know, 100 unit subdivisions, 150 unit subdivisions. But sooner rather than later, you're going to be seeing 12 unit subdivisions, 4 unit subdivisions, 10 unit subdivisions. And how do you start to regulate some of those because there's a drip, drip, drip effect onto the, onto the network? So these are the types of conversations we want to have. And again, given so many pending developments right now, we think it needs to happen sooner rather than later. So we're prepared to kind of jump right in tomorrow, start to work this through. We've already been working on, I should say, with Director Harrington.
Thanks.
Hope that helped.
Any other questions?
Again, Madam Mayor, Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. Perhaps for a later conversation, as we begin to integrate, I guess, following on with Councilman Challenger's question about not making sure we don't work in silos, perhaps we're not there yet, but I think we should maybe start some kind of a discussion or initiate where we talk about other forms of transportation, specifically, you know, bicycling, walking. That's in our comp plan today as a goal and a policy. And then at some point in time, again, turn back to traffic calming as well. So all I'm suggesting is this is, should be an integrated approach at some time for later discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what we're looking for this evening is a consensus to accept the professional services agreement and move it down to legislation. Councilman Goldsmith, you can, Councilman Challenger?
Yes.
Councilman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes, of course.
And I am as well. So we will see that down at legislation in just a bit. All right. Thank you very much, Jamie. I appreciate it. That brings us to a draft annual calendar and meeting schedule. Mr. Town Clerk?
Yes, Council, on November 9th, 2021, you passed your 2022 meeting schedule with a rough consensus. Resolution 2230 requires a resolution. So I sent out to senior staff and to all of members of council, the drafted calendar last week, compensating for the dates we know of for M M L. There's no elections this year, no holidays should fall on Tuesday. So unless anybody sees anything earth shattering after that, this is the proposed schedule. Of course, we don't know about October, and we can't predict the future, so we'll have to adapt. But as it stands right now, this is the schedule for 2023.
All right. Do I have any comments from, or questions from council? Okay. And we're looking for a consensus to move it forward down to legislation to adopt? Okay?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
And we are good with that. Thank you very much, Mr. Town Clerk. That brings us to our next item on the agenda, the council agenda item requests. We have five requests that were submitted to us for future consideration. And thank you for that. I appreciate that. What we're looking for this evening is if there is a consensus to have these put on a future work, oh, I can't even say work session, because we, a future meeting, sorry. Oh, this is our last work session, so I'm not out of line right here, for a future meeting. And that's, I guess, what we're looking for. And if there's any questions, and I do have a few questions, but I'll open it up to council first to see if anyone has any questions on the five agenda requests. So my questions, and this is one of the things that we were looking at last time, then when we were discussing this, is where does the, the bulk of the work come from? Who is going to present? Who is going to do the homework? The, all of that. So when I was looking at these, which, all of them are, are topics that we have requested, or we have talked about before, with the exception of, I think, cyber security, I don't remember seeing that one. Looking at that, the first one was for the comp plan, just an update. So who is the point of contact on that? What, what kind of supporting documents? What is the intent? What are you looking for, Councilman Jenkins, besides just an update? And who do you task with this?
On, thank you, on, Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. On the second page of the request that I was, I was suggesting, it's the presenter, Director Harrington, as planning director. If you recall, in the April 2020 comprehensive plan in the appendix, there's a, for want of a better word, a, a matrix of all the goals and objectives, and then who's responsible. And perhaps that can be used as a, as a send off or a dashboard to, to get some understanding of where we are on each of those different items. That's already in the comp plan. It's in the, I think it's in the appendix.
Okay. Is this something that can be accomplished through questions, specific questions instead? This is a very, very broad, I know it's only part three, the implementation and capital improvement. And I think that might, Mr. Manuel, correct me if I'm wrong, also fall under the purview of the treasurer, since it's capital improvements? And since we are right now in between treasures, is?
Yeah, the specific projects would probably be managed in departments, but anything that, as you said, anything that would cover the town treasurer's office specific, it would be hard to update. But, yeah, I think, you know, a lot of the comprehensive plan, the responsibilities are probably going to be within operations. And then, you know, I also think that if we're going to talk comp plan, we also need to talk strategic plans. So maybe we sort of incorporate that in. And I think it's good that, I don't disagree with the need to have this conversation. I think it would be good, especially in advance of future budget discussions, that we ensure we're spending the people's money on the right things, so to speak. So I think it gives us some time. It's not as urgent, maybe, you know, sometime December, January, within the next few months before we really engage in the F Y 24 budget discussions. I think it would be good to sort of go through and sort of grade ourselves on how we've done. And, you know, that way we keep in mind what our priorities are as we move into those budget discussions.
So I guess we're going to look for a consensus from the council that maybe have this at the beginning of the year and combine it with strategic plan discussion? Beginning next year, is that sound?
So maybe perhaps allow Mr. Manuel and Janine to tell us when they could possibly bring it forward. I don't think we have to have a date, but as long as it's before we start planning for the budget, we do need to have that information. So thank you, Councilman.
And, and, and thank you. And perhaps it could just be divided up. One, one part of a discussion is the comp plan, and the next part could be the strategic plan. And so I do would concur with your word of using a discussion. I think that's, at least that was my intent. Maybe it didn't come out that way, but it's, that's the intent.
And Councilman Jenkins, it may be very helpful, maybe talking with Mr. Manuel and getting specific questions that you have, so that it leads us in a direction instead of just doing a broad overview on that, if that's helpful?
I think we can communicate. We just want to make sure that staff's providing the desired information to the council, so.
Thank you. All right. And the next one was the.
Cybersecurity.
Cybersecurity. And you and I both received the same email today, and it's very timely that we sent it up there. On this, you were talking about having, well, it didn't indicate who you would have for present, for a presenter. Would, are you just looking to ask certain questions? Is this something that maybe you can ask specific questions and it could be relayed that way? Or is there a presentation? What was your ask for this?
The intent was, I think, Councilman Bryant Ward and I attended the Sunday session at M M L conference, a three-hour session on cybersecurity from a professor from the University of Maryland.
I was there, too.
And so it was pretty enlightening, and from my perspective, a little uneasiness about, at least for me, at least, not understanding how fully prepared we are, maybe we are and we aren't. I just don't know. So the intent was to have our I T consultant, again, on the second page, is, maybe it didn't come out that way, but the presenter would be our I T consultant.
Oh.
On page two or three. And just to have them come and talk to us about, perhaps in a closed session, and I think I did not take that as well, and I provided the, yes, I provided the rationale behind going in the closed session, just to have them, them or whatever, to pray from our consultant, just tell us what they're doing or what the threats are and possible opportunities to prevent any ransomware or any attack on our facilities. That's all.
So I did, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, Ward three, I also shared that information with Mr. Manuel, and he indicated that some work had already been done. So perhaps we could have an update on what has been done.
Yeah, we can have our consultant, like you said, in closed session because it's sensitive information as far as security goes. But, yeah, we have been working to improve our cybersecurity with our consultant, and we could have him present to provide an update, as we said, in a closed session format. He typically works with us on Tuesdays, so we just have him hold over one evening and provide the update and sort of let you know. So I know we just had an assist assessment. I believe we received a report back July 31st, so we have been taking measures. And as well as, you know, the uncomfortable two-party authentication.
Yes, correct.
Which is, is, is a lot of fun, but at the same time, it's what we need to do to protect our, our system. So we will talk, if that's the will of council, I should say, we will definitely can arrange for our I T consultant to be present to provide an update.
Is it possible for him to be not disclosing the details, but tell us where we are? Are we solid? You know, do we have a, is our, our systems secure? Because he is a part-time person, so, you know, if you're acting enough, you know, and so maybe just a statement?
Yeah, with data prize, I think he's, you know, it's never enough, but I think we've improved in the last year. Michelle Minor has overtaken sort of managing that contract. The two-party authentication was a big step that he had been pushing for, for years, and was finally implemented. So, yeah, I think I've also asked him to provide us with a five-year capital plan, not getting into security, but more data storage, trying to move more into the cloud. Those departments like, you know, chiefs with body cam footage and everything else, the amount of server space that that can take, we've sort of, I guess, are transitioning to a cloud-based storage. So there's many other things that maybe wouldn't qualify for a closed session, but maybe it would be informational for council to hear what the, the overall I T plan is. But that is something I haven't received yet that I've requested of him, was a five-year capital plan, so that we can sort of determine how we're going to pay for, for some of these increases.
Mr. Manuel, do you think that that would be something, instead of a presentation, as you indicated, maybe a statement? And you have the conversation with our I T consultant, and then just bring that forward to council, instead of having him present?
It very well could be. I do not, you know, not to get into our operational procedures, but I don't like the idea of putting confidential information out. I like you to hear it. I like you to not, not that I don't trust you, I don't like, you know, things leaving the room. So I think it's in the best interest that maybe, at least the confidential security elements of the presentation, I would rather you hear. There will be a lot of information that he will be able to provide in a written report that probably would not qualify for a closed session format. So I don't want to waste your time. You can read at noon on a Saturday just as well as you can listen at six o'clock on a Tuesday night, so.
And when would you, when would you think would be good to have this discussion on the cybersecurity?
I think we could turn that around in December.
Okay.
I think, I don't want Michelle to get back in the office tomorrow and put me to headlock, but.
We'll put a question mark on it. Not an exclamation point, exclamation point. And the next one is on Dorchester, a request to get an update on that. And, okay, now I totally don't see who is supposed to present that. Did I miss that one?
I put it in the wrong place. I, under purpose, I added that provided by the executive director and the board chair.
Do they have a full board that's operational? Okay, that would be fantastic for them to come in front of.
I think they, and I think they may have a new executive director or semi-new executive director.
Well, Coach B is the.
He's the chair.
Chair.
Okay, but I think.
And they don't have an executive director that they've hired yet. So.
Yeah, I've been working just for informational purposes. I've been working with Coach B, and I owe him information. I just haven't had time to get back to him, sort of a, an update on where we are as far as the town goes and the monies that we've.
Right.
Set aside so that they understand what we're working with, is when, how that interacts with the design.
Right, exactly. And then I.
Engaged out of Baltimore.
And then they have obviously got the state bonding fund as well, so.
Yes, last year, and we've.
And then I think there's an ARPA budget item that we've incorporated in ARPA. So I, my point was just to try to get an overall sense of where they are.
Yeah, and we need to square up everything so that we know where we are.
Sure.
Because a lot of things have happened, so.
Yep.
On both ends.
Is there a consensus from the council to move it forward to a future agenda? All right. We're just not going to pinpoint you to a date, but that one, when, when there's lack of, of things to do there, you go. When, when there's lack of things to do, there you go, put that one in there.
And this is something that's needed to happen anyway. We need to move this forward. We've been talking about this for a very long time. And we held the board accountable for it, but they can't move without us. Were you ever able to talk to the neighborhood design who did?
I have not.
Okay.
Because there's a third element in our engagement, which was also reaching out into the neighborhood. And we wanted to sort of provide a link between the new basketball courts that were done with the Wills Group and sort of improve that corridor, if you will, through, could be anything from street plannings. They're the design experts, street plannings, benches, things of that nature.
I probably talked about that when we had the update from them.
Yeah, that was the third phase of the task order that we signed with them. So I need to talk to them about that to see where they are. You know, the building is the big thing in not knowing with construction prices and materials. I think they had gone out and tried, attempted to get construction firms to quote and even just to provide a.
They did come back with several bids, and it was going to be very costly, but they didn't budget for contingency. And I did ask that they need, that they need to save some room for contingency. They were building to capacity, and that was going to put them in a really bad position, so.
The next one is the La Plata Town Center Corporation and the Main Street, I guess, probationary status. I know that you sit on the board right now of the LPTCC. Have you had a meeting recently?
No, we have not, and that's on me. But as I said at the last council meeting two weeks ago, I did send them on the board and update from the slides prevented by Mr. Hendricks from the transportation stats because they seemed very interested in transportation issues. So I sent that to him on October the 16th, and I haven't heard any follow-up information. So I was thinking that perhaps we just need to talk about some more where they are or where they aren't.
Have you asked to schedule a meeting?
No, I have not, no.
And that might be the next step to do. And then that would be great to see if there's an interest for them to come forward and have a discussion on, on the future of the LPTCC.
Well, I, I don't disagree with that. I, I guess for me, it's just been that they seem, well, I often don't speak for themselves. I don't speak for them.
So are they in good standing now with the state?
No.
Well, I don't, I still don't understand how we can operate and we're not in good standing. They, they cannot call themselves an organization if they're not in good standing with the state. They need to get in good standing with the state before we continue to have these conversations with a defunct organization. They need to be in good standing.
And when's the last time, I mean, I know that they were working on it. I'm, I don't have my hand in that. They were working on.
They were, they were attempting to do that, but then they, remember, they met with us a year ago this past fall to get some direction from us. And then we had a follow-up meeting, and it was kind of left to limbo what the next step was. They.
Well, I think if you could.
So I can reach out to them again.
Yeah, and hold a meeting or hold, I don't know if you want to call it a meeting.
Well, I was trying to, I was trying to also make the point that my feeling was that I should not be the chair, that they need to pick a chair and they need to have other board, you know, that they need to run the meeting, not me.
But I think that's internal to the organization.
That's correct.
But before they can do business with us, they need to be in good standing. Before we give them any directives, they need to be in good standing as an organization to do town with us. We can't do business with a defunct organization. Right now, they're nonexistent. If they don't have, if they haven't paid their personal.
The tax on the state, the registration.
Exactly, so they need to get that before any other, you know, conversations continue. We can't, we cannot engage them.
So we will not move forward with this one until you come back with us, to us, and let us know their status of if they are in good standing.
But, but again, also for future consideration, as part of this was, I, I'm just uncertain as to what our Main Street future is. I mean, is it going to remain probationary? Is it going to, I mean, again, we, we've talked about it a long time, long before I was ever elected, and we just frankly kind of seem to keep talking about. So what are we going to do or not do? I, I'm just trying to get a handle around that.
Well, I know right now we are.
Probationary, right?
Well, not probation, we're an affiliate.
Well, same difference, okay.
So we do, we, and I'm sure that if Director Phipps can probably brief you on what's going on, we just received, or we should be receiving, notification of a $10,000 grant that the affiliate, Main Street affiliate was awarded. So that should be coming shortly. And the only thing that is preventing us to be full-blown designation.
I know, I know all the requirements, right? We need to, we need to dedicate three years of funding. We got to have a person full of part-time.
Right, so right now they're moving forward and they are operational as a Main Street affiliate.
So, but, and that's terrific, but, but again, what's the $10,000 going to be used for? I'm, I'm just kind of, to me, it's unknown. So we have $10,000, so what do we do with it?
And I think that's in the grant request that, the proposal that was submitted. So that is something that may be a, a discussion to be, that we can be briefed on that by Director Phipps when the time comes and we're actually awarded that, if we haven't been awarded it already.
Yeah, I think we need to figure out what the relationship between the Town Center Corporation and our Main Street program. And, you know, not to sound like Jamie, but if we wait for somebody else to tell us what we're going to be, maybe we should take the lead. My experience with Main Street, which is probably about 20 years, is we need a dedicated person to focus on the Main Street program. And that may be something that's going to come up during the budget discussions because you really have to have someone who's dedicated to that.
Correct.
And seeing out that, but it's, you know, it is a volunteer-based program, and that's something I have a concern about is, you know, a lot of organizations come into, they call it STP, same 10 people. It's the same 10 people that do every committee that there is. And you can really burn out the volunteerism or the volunteers, if you will, with just overburning them, the same 10 people with as many tasks as you can get. So I think it's, it's a discussion for another day, but I think it's a discussion that we need to have because, you know, if we are going to go with the Main Street program, then there's, needs to be personnel associated with that program.
And again, maybe I wasn't articulate enough, but again, that's the point for all of these requests is a discussion so we can talk, so we hear other ideas other than, we just get other input and other ideas. Thank you.
And then the last one is a request for nuisance zoning amendment. I know that you have provided from Westminster, City of Westminster, Maryland, their code. And you're asking the attorney to take lead on this one. Mr. Manuel, how, what is the process?
Yeah, I spoke with the attorney, and, you know, we've, we've had this for a while, just hasn't unfortunately been able to get to the top of our priority list. You know, we can take a model ordinance and we can, you know, have a model ordinance drafted for council's consideration. And if, you know, if the will of council, then we could move forward with adopting an amendment to the town code to sort of insert this into our code.
How does this impact us now? Because if there is a disorderly, disorderly house or a nuisance, does it fall right now under the county or is it?
I know Chief Schinner, I believe you used a disorderly house out on, just off Washington Avenue? We used Hawthorne. I don't know if you want to speak to how we addressed the, I believe that was.
We used a state statute.
State statute.
But if there's not a lot of team, so I can charge somebody, and we did, we charged them multiple times. The real kicker, like what they have in Prince George's, is when you can go after the real property owner that lets this continue and continue to happen. So we used it in Greenbelt, it worked. And usually when you got to that point where you're going to seize a real property and the letter went out in Prince George's that comes from the state's attorney's office, people get in line really, really quick. So it's a tool in the toolbox. It's not something you can navigate, but it is a tool in the toolbox.
And some background for me is that within my neighborhood, there are at least three houses that we've had a continual problem with, with dispossessing enforcement and dogs and whatever. And now the dogs have left, we think, but the house has mold in it. And the other house next door has a pool that's got mold growing and algae growing and that. And so it creates a real neighborhood issue and safety issue about how do you get folks to take care of their properties? Because it impacts the neighborhoods, and it's a safety issue.
If it has mold in their house, and I don't know the answer to this, so I'm, I'm just asking, how does that impact the neighborhood? If my house has mold, which it doesn't, but if my house has mold in it, does it, do the, are the spores airborne and does it impact the neighbors? That I don't know.
I don't know specifically, to be honest with you, but, but there is a, another effect in that it deteriorates the property values in a neighborhood when these houses are literally trashed.
So does that fall under HOA and?
There is no HOA where I live now.
But I can see this helping, helping with the rental properties that we have that are errant, it's going out and having conversations with them. That's not a good use of his time. So if there's something else we can do to hold the property owner, you know, accountable, I would see us moving forward with that discussion and that ordinance because we do have issues with renters, you know? And so, and not all renters by any means, but for those that are problem, you know, they have no investment, investment in the property, but bringing the homeowners in and holding them accountable would help a lot.
And this is just one example from one town in Maryland. There's many others. I think the chief and I shared some information on that as well. So there's a lot of other examples out there in Maryland.
So council, is there a desire to move this forward? Investigative?
Yes, absolutely, for the same reasons Councilwoman Brian Ward said. I did want to say that Director Harrington sent a little thing on the chat message about Chapter 117, Health and Sanitation, currently under review.
Okay, so there is something, and that's exactly why we bring this forward. So that, thank you, Director Harrington, that, so this is something that they are looking at? And this might be, as the chief said, another tool in toolbox. So if we could, there is an interest?
UX two.
Yeah. I thought because you made yours.
UX two, but for the record.
I will, I will get yours because you were very vocal and said, is there a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes, there is.
Okay, I knew what this side was because you guys had it. So there's consensus to move forward. And if, Mr. Manuel, if you could just put it on sometime in the future work sessions? Oh, regular meeting, sorry about that. All right, that brings us to legislation. We have Resolution 22-35 Professional Services Agreement.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, Transportation Planning and Engineering Professional Services, excuse me, a resolution for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract agreement for professional services for transportation, planning, and engineering related to certain projects and current and future developments in projects and all matters related thereto. And this is for your consideration of adoption.
So I, do I have a motion to accept Resolution 22-35 as presented?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept Resolution 22-35 Transportation Planning and Engineering Professional Services Agreement as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Any discussion? All in favor, please.
Sorry, I, this, I, I just want to say it sounded like from the presenter that there's an open discussion to be had about traffic impact studies moving forward, and him and Director Harrington are going to examine the best ways to implement that. So if I'm wrong in my interpretation of that discussion, please let me know. But that's what it sounded like to me, so related to this presentation.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
All right, so I have a motion, and it's been properly seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to Resolution 22-33, Mobile Video Trailers Purchase.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, for your consideration of adoption, a resolution concerning La Plata Police Department Mobile Video Trailers Purchase for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract purchase agreement of mobile video trailers for the La Plata Police Department.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to accept Resolution 22-33 as presented?
I make a motion to accept Resolution 22-33 as presented.
Do I have a?
Video trailer purchase.
Sorry about that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I just wanted to say this did save us about $6,000 to do it, you know, all together. So that was great.
Thank you for that. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to our final resolution for the evening, Resolution 22-34.
Right, yes, Mayor and Town Council, a resolution concerning La Plata Town Council 2023 Regular Meeting Schedule for the purpose of maintaining a regulated and publicly accessible schedule of town council meetings. This is for your consideration of adoption.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to accept Resolution 22-34 as presented?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to accept, accept a Resolution 22-34, La Plata Town Council 2023 Regular Meeting Schedule.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. We have a reason to go into closed session. Do I have someone to make a motion to go into closed session? Okay, I make a motion that we go into closed session based on the statutory authority, state government Article 3-305B12 to conduct or discuss an investigative proceeding on actual or possible crime conduct. The reason is police matters. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I will do roll call. If you are in favor to go into closed session, please say aye. If not, please say nay. Councilman Goldsmith?
Aye.
Councilman Trolinger?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Mayor James is aye. We will go into closed session immediately following the closing of this special meeting. And I make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very good, very much. Thanks for a great meeting.